Good morning, I'm here, this is Schiffer.
Good morning, Commissioner Schiffer.
This is Bull, I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, Mr. Bull.
Morning.
President Cavelo, we are live on YouTube now. And I'm still looking at the list here to see if we can't get another commissioner on here.
Okay.
Commissioner Wildcat, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
All right, thank you, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem, glad to have you.
Thank you.
President Cavelo, I can continue to watch this if you want to go ahead and start, I'll move any other commissioners over as.
Perfect, well, we are here for the special meeting of June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. At this point, Director Laramendi, I'd ask you to do the roll call.
President Cavelo.
Here.
Commissioner Torgason is absent, Commissioner Bull.
Present.
Commissioner Schiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Broussard is absent. Vice President Rithhaller is absent. Commissioner Curra.
Here.
Commissioner Francisco is absent. Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
Senator Kolb is absent. Representative Davis is absent. And Governor's Liaison, Mr. Lebanon, are also absent. President Cavelo, you do have a quorum.
Very good. If you would carry forward with the welcome, please.
Welcome to the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. The primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission is the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of all the participants, all the participants in all lawful gaming and paramutual activity. Individuals who wish to address the commission will be recognized and called on by the president to speak. After the president has recognized you, please clearly state your name and the name of the organization you represent prior to addressing the commission. All comments, questions, and responses must flow through the president by addressing the president each time you wish to speak. This procedure ensures an orderly flow of discussion during the commission meeting. All meetings of the governing body of an agency are public meetings open to the public except as otherwise provided pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh three A. This meeting is being held via Zoom and is available to watch via YouTube on the Gaming Commission's YouTube channel. The commission may open an executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five A. Inclusion on the agenda does not necessarily constitute a commission action.
Very good, thank you. We'll now open with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you, now we'll move on to the agenda. Commissioners, you've all been, all received the agenda via email. Is there any discussion or consideration for possible actions? Or do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
This is Commissioner Schiffer, I move to adopt the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiffer, do I hear a second?
Commissioner Curra will second that.
Second from Commissioner Curra, is there any discussion? Hang on, then we'll vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, the agenda has been adopted, so we'll move right to item number three, Director Laramendi.
President Cavelo, item number three is a two-part discussion continuing from our last meeting. The twenty twenty-six permitting of Cowboy Racing and the surrender of the twenty twenty-five permits. If you remember the last meeting, there was some discussion by Cowboy Racing. They're having some construction delays specifically with power, which makes it very unfeasible to run in the twenty twenty-five season in October. They presented some information, they're also on the line, so I'll let them speak to that. If they have any more updates on that, and then we can go over the the application that will actually be considered today.
Okay, at this time, Cowboy Racing, if you'd like to give us some brief comments, do you have any updates?
Good morning, my name is Will Edwards, Cowboy Racing, five oh six Shoshone, Cheyenne, Wyoming. With me, I have Bill Edwards of Cowboy Racing, five oh six Shoshone Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And also on the line, we have Jody Shea and Scott Drudy with First Racing. All supporting the online to support the application. Thank you for your time this morning in considering this renewed application. As far as updates, we continue to make progress on the track. You know, I'm happy to report that we are currently placing the base course material on the track itself. And the site is coming along. If you're in the Cheyenne region, you know that we've experienced some pretty incredible rains over the last couple of weeks. Most notably this week, we had some significant rains that forced us to shut down the site most of the week. So that experienced some delays, but we keep, we keep plugging along. We met with staff regarding this application along with the Assistant Attorney General, and we agree with their suggested path forward in, in, that is in front of you today. And with that, I, I'm happy to get into the details of the project itself and what we're experiencing as far as delays, but other than that, I think we'll all stand for questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? As far from my point of view, I appreciate you guys being here and appreciate your openness with regards to your project, I think everyone would like to see this project be finished, but certainly we understand there are some challenges, first of all, it's, it's a huge project, we understand that, and obviously you're dealing with a lot of different things, so from my point of view, I think we, we'd like to see you have the time to do it and do it right. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions? Okay, then let's get right to the, to the meat of this, of the subject. You have before us a request. Director Laramendi, you can confirm that, but they basically are requesting that we accept the twenty-five permit back, and they're requesting a permit for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Three years rather than one, is that correct?
President Cavelo, that is correct, so the application that you have is for the live event permit for the calendar years of twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. There's no specific date yet, if you remember the last meeting, we had discussed that those dates need to be considered in November at the fall meeting with the remainder of the other operators. So we can see it, you know, the picture as a whole with all four operators and race states. So closer to the November meeting, Cowboy Racing will provide, you know, dates to run in the twenty-six season and, and so on, if they're approved through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And they'll also provide updated financials and some of that other stuff that we require with those updated applications. The updated financials right now are kind of a moot point until we get closer to the, the November meeting, so that would be forthcoming as well, that would all be presented to you all in November. Other than that, President Cavelo, everything else on the application you can see is, is basically the same. The directors and chief executives, all that, under item number one is the same as the original submission. The items three, four, and five, the dates open for training and dark days that again can't be really determined until we have dates of run. The schedule of events would be the same as what they were going to offer in twenty twenty-five. The per schedule may change, that would also be submitted closer to the November meeting. And outside of that, President Cavelo, I would stand for any questions on the application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Director Laramendi?
I have none.
Commissioner Schiffer here, yes, I have some questions.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Cavelo. So my understanding is that first, we have to determine if they have good cause to surrender the twenty twenty-five racing license. I mean, is that correct? Because I think it has some repercussions on the simulcasting permit that we granted to Cowboy Racing. So since the commissioners weren't part of the discussions between the Attorney General, the staff and Cowboy Racing, I was wondering if Mr. Laramendi could opine on what's going on here in the first instance before we get to the application for the twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight license, thank you.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, so the, the thought behind this is to present the twenty-six and beyond application for your consideration. If that twenty twenty-six application and beyond is approved by you all, then Cowboy Racing would surrender their twenty twenty-five permits. And in the surrendering of the twenty twenty-five permits, it would be up to you all to decide if you find that the construction delays would be good cause to waive the sixteen day requirements in the twenty twenty-five permits. Does that answer your question, Mr. Schiffer?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Laramendi, I mean, I guess the question, so, so if we do not find good cause, then Cowboy Racing would not be eligible to reapply for a simulcasting permit until twenty twenty-seven, is that correct?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, that potentially, part of the reason of the surrendering of the permit as well is if the, if the permit is surrendered, does the sixteen day requirement still stand? One of the other things that, you know, we've been looking at is, they were issued a simulcast number, but they've never applied for any physical simulcast locations, so there's no current locations that would be suspended or forced to close without the running of the sixteen days. That's something that we would still have to, to consider, and I can see Miss Shea has, has her in that, she can maybe speak to that as well.
So I mean, just before we, excuse me, President Cavelo, if I might, so I can't remember what the regulation is on, on this, but I believe there's a regulation on if you don't run the sixteen days without cause, then that brings the simulcasting permit, whether there's actual build out on locations into question, is, is that correct? I'm just trying to have an understanding of what the, what the ramifications are here, thank you.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, I, I'll actually read it to you, that way you have it verbatim. So in chapter ten of the rules, it says, in the case of a permity granted both a live and simulcast event permit that fails or refuses to actually run the sixteen days of live horse races or a lesser number of days as approved by the commission, that permity shall not receive a simulcast permit for the next calendar year. A simulcast permit issued for the year in which the required number of flat track race days were not conducted shall have their simulcast permit immediately suspended for the remainder of the same year. For good cause shown, a permity may be excused from failing or refusing to run the required days of flat track racing.
Commissioner Cavelo, if I could ask one follow-up.
Go ahead.
Do we have a definition of good cause within language of the statutes or regulations, or is that something we determined? Because generally, it's been like weather or things like that.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, there is no definition of good cause in the rulebook, it is, it is discretionary for the commission to determine if they believe that the evidence presented to you all to, to forfeit those sixteen days or to get away from those sixteen days is good cause.
Very good, I have a question, so with regard to this, upon them basically turning back or, or relinquishing the twenty twenty-five permit, we, if we were to find good cause, would that also then negate the simulcast permit for the year as well?
President Cavelo, that is correct, so if they, if they relinquish their twenty twenty-five live racing permits, they're not eligible to do any simulcasting in twenty twenty-five.
But they could apply in twenty-six.
They could, they could reapply in twenty twenty-six, yeah. And then if, if you find good cause and they apply in twenty twenty-six, and then they fail to run the twenty twenty-six dates that they are approved for, then the sixteen day requirement would fall back into place and they, they could potentially lose their simulcasting abilities for the remainder of twenty-six and then all of twenty-seven.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, does any other, have you have any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bull?
Thank you, Mr. President. So are we going to do two motions here, one to accept the surrender of the twenty twenty-five permit, and a second motion to authorize the twenty twenty-six permit, is that what we're going to do?
To me, that feels the cleanest.
Okay. Thank you.
President Cavelo, Miss Shea also has her hand raised.
Yeah. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Cavelo and commissioners, thanks for your time this morning and for setting this special meeting. I, I agree with Director Laramendi, I'd just like to add maybe a, a different spin on the process for your consideration. In visiting with Director Laramendi and Mr. Kaler, it, it was our thought that by surrendering the twenty twenty-five permit, we essentially eliminate the underlying basis that would allow us to conduct simulcast activities anyway. We recognize that a precondition to applying for a simulcast permit and conducting and open, opening OTB facilities is that we have our live event permit. By surrendering our twenty twenty-five live event permit, we would not satisfy the precondition to have OTBs anyway, and so it was our thought that that was where the analysis could begin. And if that is the case, this commission does not get to the, the good cause analysis. Nonetheless, if the commission believes the good cause analysis is appropriate, we believe that the circumstances before Cowboy Racing right now are sufficient to meet that good cause. And I'd like to recap that a little bit, we did talk about it in, in May at the last meeting, but the four, the four sort of overriding issues that Cowboy Racing is facing, one is electricity. Cowboy Racing received some assurances early this year that electricity could be installed by August of this year, we learned late April, early May that that was not going to happen. The second circumstance was oil and gas drilling on-site, we learned that that was going to be, those activities were going to begin late summer, early fall as well, which would cause some significant disruption and interruption with race operations and frankly, the general enjoyment of attending those races. The third reason was weather, Will talked about weather already, the, the rain has caused significant challenges in getting the soil just as they want it on the track. And then finally tariffs relating to, to aluminum and steel. We expect to cause issues with cost and availability, and so those are the four big reasons that should this commission engage in the good cause analysis, we believe weigh substantially in favor of determining that good cause does exist for, for those, for Cowboy Racing to be excused from the sixteen race days. I do think it's notable that Cowboy Racing has not submitted any applications for site-specific OTBs. They have not opened any facilities this year because of their concern that maybe the track wouldn't be complete, and so they certainly didn't want to risk their ability to do that. We do have before you an application for the three years of race dates. We did that because the statute and the rules allow us to apply for up to three years, so that is the application before you today. We recognize that in November, it was not the will of the commission to grant the three years. We wanted to provide that opportunity for the commission again today to discuss the duration of any live event permit it is willing to grant to us today, so thank you, I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
Miss Shea, thank you very much, commissioners, do you have any questions for Miss Shea?
Commissioner Schiffer here.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schiffer, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, President Cavelo, Miss Shea. My concern is again this regulation that if you, because, because I'm understanding now that you're saying you want to surrender the permit for twenty twenty-five without good cause. And my, my concern is the, the regulation which provides that if you do, if you don't run without good cause, then you forfeit your simulcast permit for basically twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, so I'd like, like you to address that issue and, and speak to how you see that these delays are good cause for not running the the twenty twenty-five race dates, thank you.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, I'll address the legal portion of your question, to the extent there are the practicality and challenges with running, I may defer that to Mr. Edwards, I think he probably has a, has a better handle on, on the implications of some of those challenges. The rules require that in order for us to operate off-track bedding facilities, that we have to have a live event permit. So that is a precondition to us even seeking a simulcast permit. That is the process that we employed back in November. If you recall, we had two permits before this commission, we had our live event permit, which the commission considered, and once that was approved, the commission then went to consider the simulcast permit. And I understand from Director Laramendi that that was a little bit unusual, that that was the first time the commission had sort of approved a general simulcast permit, the reason that that occurred was because we needed that approval to go to the county, which we have done, and we've obtained those approvals from the county. But backing up a little bit, we could have never obtained that simulcast permit have we, had we not obtained the live event permit. So in this circumstance, if we were to surrender our twenty twenty-five live event permit, I believe that it would eliminate the basis and grounds that we would ever have to obtain the simulcast permit. And so therefore, by not having the live event permit, there's no simulcast permit and OTB activities to consider, we would have never had the legal basis to do that, and so we're essentially just sort of unwinding the clock a little bit, but to the extent that process does not make sense to this commission, and the commission determines that even if you surrender the twenty twenty-five simulcast permit, that, that you want to consider good cause. I think the commission can do that, I mean, if the commission wants to consider sort of a belt and suspenders to ensure that this applicant has all of the rights and responsibilities and frankly enjoys all of the benefits of running a racetrack and also supporting purses through OTBs like the other tracks have, I think the commissioners could take that additional step and consider good cause. I agree with you, Commissioner Schiffer, that in the past, this commission has determined that, that weather solely has been a sufficient basis to excuse a track from running their sixteen race days. In this instance, we've got weather as one of the many factors, we've got additional factors that complicate racing in August and September of this year. President Cavelo mentioned just a, a bit ago that my client has undertaken an enormous task to actually build a mile-long racetrack. It's a significant undertaking, it's an expensive undertaking, and these, these recent developments have been unexpected, certainly the steel and aluminum tariffs have been unexpected, and so to the extent these things could not have been predicted when we were before you last November, I certainly believe to provide the basis for good cause for this commission to say, hey, we're going to excuse you from the race days in twenty twenty-five. To the extent Will has other comments on practically what these challenges mean for racing, I, I'd welcome him to, to share those.
Thank you, Miss Shea, we appreciate your comments there. So, so Commissioner Schiffer, the legality of them, obviously relinquishing their twenty-five permit is one thing, we also have the ability to recognize that there were, I guess, extenuating circumstances and allow that that we can basically forgive the sixteen days racing in addition, just to clean that up, and and then so I would basically ask Commissioner Bull his, with his extensive legal background, his opinion in that regard.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
My thinking is, we do a motion to accept the relinquishment by Cowboy Racing of its twenty twenty-five live permit. And you know, I doubt if the rule ever anticipated voluntary surrender of a permit. But I think the prudent thing to do would be to make the motion, enumerate the just cause, I think there's just cause, and then vote on the motion, so we've got everything covered. You know, I think Jody might be right, but who cares, let's, let's make the findings of just cause and and see if we can pass the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bull, I, I'm in agreement, I think that cleans it up, if, if that's what we want to do, and we want to allow them to move forward, we just give, we just, we allow that, we've determined that there certainly is just cause, move forward, so anyone else have anything they'd like to say, Commissioner Wildcat, Commissioner Curra?
President Cavelo, I, I have Ms. Lake Hawk, she had raised her hand as well.
Yes, Ms. Lake Hawk, the floor is yours.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, President Cavelo, Commission, just a couple of comments as a current operator. One, I just want to distinguish that the weather delays that have been excused in the past are very different than what is being brought forward to today. In the past, I of course have been before this commission since twenty sixteen, in the past we have been excused for, I think at most, two to three days from our racing to, for weather delays during the meet. We all race in Wyoming, so we deal with, we deal with Wyoming weather year-round, we have to get the track ready. We just had rain in Evanston all this week, and we had to get the track ready for practice riders. So that is just a continuing operational piece for horse racing in Wyoming. The second thing I'd just like to caution the commission is, is we are setting a precedent here. And, and while Cowboy Racing has not applied for any OTB permits and essentially, you know, asking to erase and start over, you know, we haven't had racing, you know, they have publicly come forward and said they were going to race in twenty-five. Horsemen had made arrangements. You know, I know the Wyoming horsemen were very excited about their track. The public has been very excited. And I, I guess I just would like to exhibit some caution to the commission that we need to be very careful about what good cause is laid here in case we are faced with the same discussion next year. Because I think it's dangerous for the industry when we have people say they're going to race and then they don't race, and it's very difficult on the horsemen, which And it's very difficult on the horsemen, which I don't think that perspective has yet been shared. The final thing I'd like to comment on is that, well, two things. One is that as operators, we're all dealing with the, the tariffs on steel. And as the commission is aware, we're building a 40,000 square foot facility just south of Cheyenne. And, and we're, we're paying that price right now for those tariffs. So we're continuing to operate business and not using that as a cause for not racing or continuing to improve our business. Finally, I'd just like to comment that I, as a current operator, 307 in Wyoming Downs would request that the commission issue a one-year permit. I think that that is the safest course of action if we're going to allow this precedent to occur. So we would respectfully request that. I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions to Ms. Lake Hawk? Commissioners?
Nope. None.
Mr. President Cavelo, I might ask Ms. Lake Hawk. If, if there's no penalty on the, the simulcasting permit to to Cowboy Racing, do you see any action by your clients to object to that?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer, if I may?
Certainly.
Yes, I believe that the good cause analysis is a high bar. And I think that especially Mr. Greer can testify that when he sought an exemption for three days of weather, it was kind of touch and go as to whether or not the commission would even approve that. What's difficult is you have three operators operating, racing, taking the risk, putting in the money, investing in the state of Wyoming, and essentially giving someone a, a permittee who has not run a free pass is what it feels like from the industry. And I say that with understanding what Cowboy Racing is saying that they're going through. It's, it's not an easy task for sure. But it hasn't been an easy task for the current operators or their investment. And so I respectfully would request that we get the live racing permit. Let's let them race. Show us you can do it. Let's get the horsemen out there. Let's get this, you know, extra excitement for the industry. Let's make sure that works because we're in a precarious position, like I stated last fall, that if we open OTBs and then we close them, that's really bad for the industry. And I know that Cowboy Racing has really, they have restrained from asking the commission for approval. They have county approval currently for the three locations in Laramie County. But I think at this point, you know, we heard all last year, we're going to race, we're going to race, we're ready to race, let's do this. And now we're asking for an extension. And while the operators are okay with the 2026 live permit being issued, we would strenuously object to the 2026 simulcast permit being granted.
Any other questions from Ms. Lake Hawk?
President Cavelo, just, just so we're clear, the only thing that is up for your consideration is 2026 and beyond live event permit. There's no simulcast permit tied to this at all. And Mr. Spiva had just raised his hand. I'm not sure.
Spiva, the floor is yours.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, President Cavelo, Director Laramendi, Commissioners. Just here in the last two years, there was lightning hit a pole right by the track in Rock Springs. It knocked out one leg of the power. That day of racing was canceled. You, you cannot run races on one leg of that, of that power grid. So it's, it's not really a new situation. The, you know, if you can't get power, you can't race is, is what I'm my point, I guess. The horsemen are disappointed, yes, that that Cheyenne is not going to run this year. However, we understand their points. And the, the power especially is one of those things that was promised to them and then taken away. So I'm not sure that, that it's any fault of theirs at all. So thank you for your time. I stand for questions.
Sorry about that. Is there any questions for Mr. Spiva?
President Cavelo, I don't see any, any further hands here.
Okay, no further hands. Commissioners, does anyone care to make a motion at this point?
Your Honor, this is Commissioner Bowle. I would move to accept the relinquishment of the 2025 live racing permit for Cowboy Racing.
Okay, with, with that, do we want to specify that it is, that we do allow that there is good cause for the 16 days of racing?
Good point. Upon the condition that the commission finds good cause for the relinquishment. And, and I think there's good cause. The power, the oil and gas activity and the weather. And I'm not worried about presidential, uh, setting some sort of precedent. If we have another track that starts building in next summer, then we may have a precedent which would apply to that. But this is a unique situation and the factors that are present here, we will never see again, at least not while I'm on the commission. So that's my motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
President Cavelo, just so I'm clear, so the motion is to accept the relinquish of the 2025 live racing permit. And by accepting that, the commission finds good cause to excuse the 16 days.
Correct. That is. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Is there any discussion from the public? All right, all those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, we will move on to the live racing permit. So before us, we have a request for three years. And I guess right now, I'm sure, then it comes down to, do, do we want to approve three years or one year? And where do, where do you stand, Commissioners? And what's your pleasure here?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the live event racing permit for Cowboy Racing for 2026 only.
We have a motion to approve the live racing permit for 2026 only.
Mr. President, this is Commissioner Curra.
Yes, sir.
On this 2026 permit, I, I'm all for granting them the extension for one year. But I think it has to be conditional upon a, the reporting and the inspections of the track, the getting all that stuff in, in there. You know, we're going to be back in the same boat for next year. It's got to be a conditional approval. I don't think it can be a flat-out approval with 16 days because what's that going to do to the other three operators? Of having to make their plans around this permitting for the, for the 16 days of racing for Cowboy. I mean, it's, it just seemed like a throwing a cog in the wheel without them being ready to race anything going on. That's my, I just have.
They would, in the November meeting, they would have to come forward with their dates.
Correct.
And, and fit those in with amongst everyone else, which they, they were very good about doing last time. So what, what kind of conditions are you, are you thinking, Commissioners?
I just believe that we need reports from staff, track inspections as to the capability of them even getting a race going. And I might be a little bit off-base, but I think those, and I'm sure Mr. Edwards and, and his staff there with Cowboy Racing has got those plans in place, but I'd like to see a, a good report on that before we actually give them, you know, future racing.
Your Honor?
Okay, we, okay, yes, Commissioner Bowle.
Commissioner Curra, before they can race in 2026 or thereafter, we're going to have to get that third-party track inspection report.
Correct.
And that'll, that has to come. The, our require, our rules require that of all the operators. So we'll see that before the 2026 events occur. And so we'll know whether they've got a viable track or not. Nick, would you expand on that for me, please?
President Cavelo, Commissioner Bowle, that's correct. They are required to submit to a third-party safety inspection prior to racing. And then in this instance, say in 2026, the third-party inspectors come out and they deem the track, you know, not safe or not ready to run. They wouldn't be allowed to run. And then that would be up to you all to decide at that time if that was good cause to give an exception for those 16 days in 2026. And if you found that that wasn't good cause enough, since you know, they're building the track and, and you already granted them an exception for 2025, then they would lose their simulcast abilities for 2026 and 2027 with that. But they would have to submit to that safety inspection and it would have to be done. And just, and also just so you're aware, you know, we've got folks in the field in Cheyenne all the time and they're, they're pretty constantly on the grounds, making sure that, you know, things are still being done and it's not just sitting there. So we're, we're watching it real time as well.
You could give us, you could actually give us updates at each meeting.
We could. And, and I mean Cowboy Racing is more than welcome to join any meeting as well and, and give updates for what they've done over the last two or three months, depending on when our meetings are.
Okay.
That sounds good, Pete. That sounds good to me.
Okay, as it stands right now, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Curra. Discussion from the commissioners.
President Cavelo, Commissioner Schiffer has his hand up.
Yes, Commissioner Schiffer, the floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you, President Cavelo. Well, you know, and I, and I'm all for this, this venture being successful. Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But we've been down this rabbit hole already once where we granted the permit with an unfinished track. I see no benefit to anybody that we don't wait till November to, to take on their permit application for a race meet. I mean, by November, we're going to know where they are for the 2026 year. So what is the benefit of us granting a permit today, not knowing if they're going to be able and ready to run in, in 2026? Let's just take this up in November when we take up all the, the, the license applications. And nobody loses anything by us delaying, delaying this motion until then. So I see no benefit to, you know, maybe Mr. Edwards has a reason, but from the commission's standpoint, I see no benefit for us granting a license at this point. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with comments? Questions? Okay, at this point, at this point, Mr. Edwards, would you like to comment with regards to this?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President. One of the reasons why we're asking for this renewed application now is so that we can continue with a lot of the contracts that we have sitting right now. Approval today gives us the assurances to sign the contract with High West Energy that is just for full transparency, $650,000. I need the assurances for the approval today in order to sign that to give us enough time. Waiting till November puts us in the exact same situation we were last November, where I, I actually was pursuing power prior to the last November election. We had to pay for a transmission study and, and was presented with the contract and then was told we wouldn't receive power. But that was, that was putting us in the same place as getting our approval in November. Giving us our approval now gives us that, gives, gives us that assurances. In addition, there, in addition, that's just one example of the many contracts I have. I have contracts with barns and stalls. I have bids on work and I'd like to proceed with all those contracts. Further, I would like to just remind the commission that we are, we do have a certified track. As far as the statutes and the rules are concerned, we have a certified report that shows the distances to be run and the grades. That's all completed. And, and to, to the extent that I, I believe that's the standard that all the other tracks are, are held to as well. We really, we really need the approval today instead of November. And I, I stand for further questions, for further clarification on, on the specifics of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else with any questions for Mr. Edwards? Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor.
President Cavelo, this is
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Schiffer again. And, and you know, my, my understanding is Mr. Edwards, that you, you know, you are financing this on your own and it's none of my business. But it seems to me that if, you know, you were talking to a bank and the bank was saying, well, I, we need a, a license, you know, in order to finance what you're doing, that's one thing. But, but if that's not the case, you're going to have to complete the track anyway, you know, by November. So what difference does it make other than, you know, how, whether you get eight hours of sleep or three hours of sleep? And, you know, I just don't understand what's the, you know, what's so pressing about getting the license today as opposed to November? I'm sorry, I just don't understand it. Thank you.
Mr. President, this is
Yes, go right ahead.
We are the bank and we have that, we have that requirement as I think any reasonable businessman would. It doesn't matter if it's a dollar out of my pocket or a dollar bank pocket in my, in my world. I have to pay myself back for this. So it's, it's actually more of a strain being a personal investment to me.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Commissioners, does anyone else have any questions for the Edwards or anything else with regards to the motion on the floor?
President Cavelo, Ms. Shea has her hand up again.
Yes, Ms. Shea, go ahead. Ms. Shea, we cannot hear you.
Thank you. I apologize.
There you go. You're good.
So I, I've just, I, for a point of clarification, and if I am wrong, I'm sure Director Laramendi will correct me. But my understanding is that the, the, the track does not have to be complete by November. In order for this permit to be granted, the rule requires that we provide a certified report of a completed track. That has been done. That report does not require the buildings and the bleachers and some of those other features that will be present on race day. But the expectation that those be present in November is one that I'm not quite sure I understand. I don't know that that expectation exists in November. It certainly exists as of the date that we have our third-party inspection and it's our expectation that all of those necessary features will be present for inspection before we run. But, but the, those, those features are not required, in my understanding, to be present as of November when we are back before you to confirm our race dates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Anyone for any questions with Ms. Shea?
President Cavelo, that is, and what Ms. Shea said, that is correct.
Okay.
So as long as everything is in place when we schedule out our third-party inspections next year and they pass that third-party inspections, those inspections, you know, it's not just the, the racetrack surface that they're looking at. They're looking at everything. They're looking at the paddock and stalls and barns and the grounds in general. So that, that all, it's all encompassing when that safety inspection is done.
Very good.
Yeah, Mr. President Cavelo, one other real quick, just so I can make sure that this is right. So the application that we have is for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. The motion is to approve just twenty twenty-six.
That is correct.
So does, is Mr. Edwards and Michelle, I, do you is that amenable to you? I mean, do you understand that?
Mr. President, yes. Thank you, Director.
Okay, do we have any other hands? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 I heard at least three, and I'm going to vote aye. So that means the motion passes four to four to one. All those opposed, excuse me, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, that makes it four to one. So the motion does pass. Mr. Laramendi, do we have any other business or any need for an executive session?
President Cavelo, there is no need for an executive session.
So that is basically all we can address at this meeting.
President Cavelo, that is correct. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be July eighteenth. That will be an in-person meeting at the Thira Thompson Building, third floor, like normal, and Zoom.
See in about four weeks. Thank you, everyone. We'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.